First of all, I'd like to ask everyone to stand for a pledge of flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of the Free States, one nation, under God, indivisible, and veritable, and just as for all.
I threw myself off a little bit when we have a workshop on this day and we normally got a pledge, pledge allegiance to the flag during the workshop, but this is an official meeting. I'd like to have a motion for the minutes of April 3rd. We have a motion and a second. Only discussion I want to talk about April 3rd. We had a full meeting, then we had a closed meeting, and then we actually reconvened and opened the meeting back again, and that's reflected in the minutes of the vote that we had for our newest commissioner. So, do we have a, we have a motion and a second, any discussion further on that? All in favor? Motion carries, and I want to invite our newest commissioner, Rob Masmianno, to come up and we're going to swear him in. Glad to have you onboard.
Thanks, Mayor.
All right. All right, now look, I'm going to make us, I'm going to say, I'm going to say these lines, the whole paragraph, and then you've got to memorize it. Okay, so look, we're going to look at, kind of at the camera so they can do this. Please, you raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, Robert M. Masmianno.
I, Robert M. Masmianno.
Do swear that I will.
Do swear that I will.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Do the best of my skill.
The best of my skill.
And judgment.
And judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of commissioner.
Execute the office of commissioner.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And laws of the state.
And laws of the state.
Let's have it official. Let's get the official signature. You've got the signature here. Do you have any one you want to picture with or take?
I see you getting ready.
This is your copy. And, of course, certainly frame that these ink pens now are worth a lot of money. This is for Michelle. Do you have anything you want to say to the group?
I'm going to do my best. I'll try not to let anybody down.
Okay, I think our first order of business, don't you think we should bring up Mr. Jones? Mr. Jones, you can come down with your group and bring a couple of chairs up with you. I know you had a, we kind of cut you short on April 3rd, and you've got as much time as you need today.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, I represent the Elton Town Center. And with me is Dr. Fortunato, one of the principals in that particular ownership of that building. We have a situation where, as a result of the recent statute regarding doctors' practices in the town of Elton, we have a legitimate medical practice which has been in the town for over 20 years. It's right, actually, in this block right adjacent to us. The practice is a cardiac medical practice. It has, its needs have expanded, its need for more space than it has now. It has looked at the space in our building, and we find under the current zoning situation, they cannot even move a block away within the same zone, the town center zone. The recent ordinance addresses the problem with methadone and suboxone clinics. And we feel that the ordinance, as it's passed, has basically, virtually, put a hamper, it has imposed difficulties upon the medical practice in the town center zone. You have to realize that in the town center zone, the Union Hospital is in that zone, the Medical Arts Buildings are in that zone, the largest land use in the town center zone is medical practice, and the largest employer in that zone is the medical practice. It is possible, we feel, to write a zoning ordinance that in fact does what you need to accomplish lawfully, which is to prohibit a methadone and suboxone clinic from being in the zone. The town of Palm Beach, Florida, is an example. They have actually written a zoning ordinance which absolutely prohibits any type of clinic which distributes methadone and suboxone-type products. That is lawful, it is possible to do that, without affecting the major land use in this particular zone. I would like Dr. Fortunato to address a little bit of the detail of what this practice is, and why it's expanding, and why what is in the town center building would be appropriate for those. Also, Mary Beth Cole is with me. This is Mr. Tim Dusen.
I'm sorry.
And you weren't here a second ago, but I wanted to apologize for you to the other night. It was a big evening, I know, I had a lot of people that wanted to speak, and, but listen, you have as much time as you want today.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, commissioners, we appreciate the opportunity to come back, and, you know, especially having the agenda you had two Wednesdays ago with the full doctor you had. Appreciate the opportunity to come back this afternoon. The tenants that would like to be in our building, the Delaware Cardiac and Vascular Associates, they've, I had a premise basically right adjacent to us here on North Street, and they've outgrown that premise. They basically need to double their space, they're going to have expanded staff, and they're going to see additional patients at the, at the location in the Elton Center. They're also going to put a couple of new diagnostic instruments that their current building cannot accommodate. Now, Ms. Henderson is one of the, is one of the practice managers, and she is on her way from the Bayer office, and I can speak for Tim Dusen and myself, and the reason we're late is because I-95 on Google Maps is a line break. Okay, so that's our apology. Understand? And Ms. is going to, if she gets here in time, and if not, she can provide you with more of the details as to the new expectations in raw numbers, as to the current patient flow, the anticipated patient flow, the current doctor, and staffing needs, and what they had planned on over there. We have a building that is basically one of the anchor larger buildings on Main Street in the town center. And our building, understandably, there is an initiative and a desire for there to be more retail and mercantile operations in the town center. Our building's two main tenants now are the both state of Maryland agencies, and they occupy the main floor right here as you come up on Main Street. And area of where the cardiology group wants to go is basically a half a story down in the, what we would call the middle floor. The lower floor goes out to our parking lot on, what's that called?
Could be Howard Street.
Howard Street. Okay, on Howard.
Sometimes it is River Street.
Water Street.
Water Street. That middle space is especially not going to be amenable to any type of retail or mercantile use. In fact, we have a current tenant of a local church, we have an ambulance group, we have what is called Degusa, which is an international metals company who has their Maryland offices there, and we have the empty space where the cardiology people want to come in.
How many square foot, Doctor, are they looking at? That is their needs.
I believe it's about 2,500 square feet. So, it's a nice chunk of space, and it would really be very helpful for our building, and really for the town of Elton.
What are they operating under now, Mayor?
They're probably operating in about, just up shy of 1,500 square feet. So, they're looking basically at a doubling of their space.
Mary Beth Cole has some observations. Obviously, she is history in the medical practice and medical field in Elton, and just some observations on the needs of medical support systems around the hospital. Mary Beth, if you could comment on that, please.
Well, first of all, just to speak into the point of cardiology, I don't know if you guys are aware, we are very limited here in Cecil County. When the last EP cardiologist left, which is an electrophysiology cardiologist left, we have none. So, patients here who have pacemakers implanted and then need to be monitored with them, they either have to go to Christiana, or if you need a Malaysian done, you're going to Christiana or you're going to Upper Chesapeake. We have nothing in between. We do need to allow these doctors to expand their practice and offer these testing programs because what we're faced with right now in terms of insurances, you're state-based insurances. Some insurances do allow us to go across lines, but believe it or not, the majority of the population that we have here in the county that has Maryland Medicaid are not allowed to cross state lines. So, when they need these more invasive cardiac procedures, they're forced to go either to Bel Air or to Baltimore, which is not conducive, especially with the older population as we are aging here in the county. I understand why the original ordinance was brought in, and I can assure you, from being a practitioner here for over 30 years and actually working with this group, they are not doctors that are involved in anything but legitimate cardiac practice. It has nothing to do with pain management, opioids, or methadone whatsoever. So, this is something that we do need. It's something that, as we all know, if we're going to allow our hospital to merge with another organization somewhere down the road, you've got to show that as a community, we can provide additional necessary medical staff, whether it be cardiology, endocrinology, obstetrics. Right now, the only programs that we have are what the hospital owns themselves. We don't have a urology program, we don't have an outside OB program. So, to attract these providers to come, we have to be able to offer them such space. These are legitimate medical needs that our community does actually need, and it is a benefit to the community. And this particular space that they're talking about is not a space that would serve itself as somebody that's going to maybe put in a dress shop, or some of those nice retail establishments, because you're not going to really see that from street level. It's not going to be something that as you drive through, it's going to attract those people. But it is something that we're close enough to the hospital that when a doc gets somebody in there and he's doing a test and he goes, "You know what? These things don't look good. Block away, I can do something about it, I can help you." So, it is, it's a legitimate need, and it is something. And since I was one of the people that came to you three years ago when we had this concern about bringing another methadone clinic into town, I'm here to support them to say, "This is legitimate, this is medicine, this is going to support and benefit our community, it's not going to hurt our community."
And like I say, it is possible, your concern is the methadone, the suboxone, the type of clinic that is out there pushing pills in the neighborhood, and the effect that has on the land use, particularly in the town center zone. It is possible, and we would be happy to get you language and show the attorney for the town, language that accomplishes what you need, but doesn't have the net so tight that it basically catches land uses, the medical practices, that you don't need caught in the net. So, we feel that we can help you with the right language. We would ask you to address this issue, again, realizing the medical practice, the doctors' practices, that's the largest land use in the town center zone, and we feel it needs another, a look at this land use to make sure it is properly controlled, accomplishing what you want, but at the same time eliminating what you certainly want to eliminate. And we'd be happy to answer any questions.
One of the, when we went through this several years ago, we knew that the fields, the medical fields have changed, and our existing zoning allowed pretty much anything anywhere. So, we actually, I think, mirrored one of the towns in Florida. I was almost thinking it was Pompano, I wasn't sure which one it was. But we mirrored a town in Florida and took their regulations that they use, and yet we may be a little tight here and there, but we went through our planning board, through our Board of Appeals, we had at least six months moratorium on the medical practices in general. So, we were, we went through it pretty much with a fine tooth comb. I knew we were going to have some hiccups along the way, and, of course, as you said, the Union Hospital's in the town, town zone, and so we do know we have some hiccups. I'm not sure, I guess I would say, if you have some language that maybe we could review, and it makes sense to all parties, where exactly is the conflict at with this? Chip, can you help me?
Yes. What Mr. Jones said is not completely correct, I don't think. If you remember the MAC clinics issue that arose, the clinic has not been, and even at the time MAC Clinic was proposing to come into town, a clinic was not allowed in the town center. Okay, so our efforts were not to keep clinics out, they were not already allowed in. The problem was, we recognized the change in the nature of the practice of medicine. We've seen a change in the practice of law, and you need to be able to advertise. Now, I've got huge billboards out on the porch. A lot of changes in professional practices, and what we found was, these people owned that building at that time, and really it kind of left to the landlord to make sure the tenant that they brought in met the zoning. And they were bringing in a tenant called MAC Clinic. Mr. Bronwell can tell you, he just happened to go over into that building, saw MAC Clinic on the door, and we Googled it. And MAC Clinic's had two other suboxone clinics in the state of Maryland. That's all they were. And they even went to court, because you had to go into courts. And some of you were in that court, right? You heard the argument. And they explained themselves, they were just a doctor's practice, it was a medicine, medical practice, because the general was an ND. But part, not part of what he was going to do, exclusively what he was going to do was write suboxone prescriptions. And that's when the judge recognized our argument, granted a TRO, a preliminary injunction, not permanent injunction, and then based on that, you declared a moratorium. And during that time, we did the examination efforts that you described. Then we passed the new zoning ordinance. We had notices, meetings, public comment, and it was adopted by, I think, unanimous vote. So, we don't need the wording, we already had the zoning in place. What we recognize is, we can't prevent a landlord from bringing in a medical practice, as legitimate as these people may be, I have no issue with them, but we really have no control over how a medical doctor practices medicine. They have their own boards, they're self-controlled, just like the medical practice. Okay, so we can't tell them what they can and can't do. And they haven't demonstrated the willingness to do it themselves, and to self-police. And so I think that's why, one of the reasons why the town came to conclusions that we did. You threw me a little bit of a curve, Mayor, because I thought you were going to take Mr. Jones up, back to your public comments. So, I really quickly had to text Ms. Flaxton here, who was briefing our staff on her cases and clients, because she leaves us on Friday to, I think, have a baby.
Evacuate.
So, hopefully it won't happen here. I think we have a doctor in the house anyway, so we can. But I did ask her, I text her and asked her if she could come over right now, because she made, she and Chip Bronwell really headed up that effort that you described in looking through the zoning efforts and coming to where we are today. And so, I was kind of stalling a little bit until Ms. Flaxton got here, but maybe now you want to defer to the two of them for their comments.
Well, and I do, I'd like to know where the, help educate us a little bit more, because we, we were involved, but tell us where the conflict with, with a cardiologist is with our existing ordinance.
Chip, I guess. Yeah, it's not specifically the cardiologist, it's just that, I think everyone as a group wanted to limit new medical practices in town center to leave it open for retail and mercantile uses. They wouldn't be allowed in any of the other zones that medical users are allowed in, but also with a special exception. And that was placed so that, you know, the Board of Zoning Appeals and Planning Commissions could have an opportunity to hear what their practice was going to be, you know, that when they were coming into practice in the zone they were allowed to be in. You know, it's not that particular practice, it's just the town center zone.
And the importance of the special exception is that it goes in front of the planning commission, and then it also goes in front of the Board of Zoning Appeals, and by doing that, and it's also reviewed by the planning offices and zoning ahead of time. So, the benefit of that is that, number one, the town's aware of where places are moving, but also is aware of what is moving in, because sometimes they classify themselves as something that ostensibly they are not. And we've run into that in the past and had to deal with injunctions, which cause a lot of disarray and cost for the town in having to confirm what is the medical practice that you're moving in, because a small medical practice has a lot less impact than a larger medical practice, or a hospital, or something like what used to be a medical. I mean, they have simply different client loads that are coming in, so the town just needs to be able to figure out, okay, there you can have enough parking, or you can have the appropriate accommodations, and then there's the additional level that generally when medical practices move in, if they're moving into buildings that didn't otherwise have medical practices in them, there are things that would have to go through the permitting process for, you know, any work that they're doing in the building. And we were running into finding about, finding out about medical practices months, years after they had been in the building, and realizing that they didn't have permits, or that work was never done that should have been done.
Is, is the medical practice allowed by special exception in the town zone? I don't think so.
Not presently.
Currently, and I know, I thought we're the kind of the hiccup, and I'll bring this up, if, if a tenant moved out of one of the buildings over at Union Hospital, how do we handle that?
So, they would, that unit would be classified as a non-conforming use, that use in that building would be. So, non-conforming uses, a similar use is permitted to move in, they can't expand the use of it. But if it was like a sole practitioner, if another sole practitioner wanted to move in, and they did so within 180 days of the prior occupant vacating the property, then it's still a non-conforming use, and they would be able to do that. If they ever laid vacant for more than 180 days, then they would lose the non-conforming use status, and ultimately, at that point, they'd only be able to do things in that area that are permitted under the zoning ordinance, which wouldn't be medical at this point. But that's just in town center.
So, if an existing business is in the town center and wants to just move to a new address, that's restricted, not allowed?
If that, if the new, if the new place they were moving to was not a non-conforming use within 180 days of the prior vacancy, then, no, they wouldn't be able to move to a new building. They'd only be able to move into a building that had that non-conforming use status.
Mr. Mayor, if I may. The director of the Delaware Clinic is here, maybe she could address a few issues of proximity to the hospital, and how the zoning ordinance impacts a practice that needs to move within the zone, but may not find space in an existing grandfather space. May would you state your full name, please?
My name is Ms. Henderson, I'm from Delaware Cardiac and Vascular, I'm the practice manager of our offices. We do have one currently in Elton that we have been practicing there for a few years, and we haven't expanded because of the hospital needs, because of the community needs. We needed to actually grow and be a little bit bigger so we can serve the community better. We do have four practitioners there, we're actually going to be adding another one there, and with that, we need more space to actually see the patients five days a week. Right now, we are seeing a lot of the patients that are discharged from Union, and I do agree, I apologize, I didn't get your person. Mary Beth, we do have a relationship with them, where they are finding it hard to find cardiologists. They can't find anyone in Elton to see the patients. They either don't accept insurance, or they're just not available to see them. And I think it's sad that patients, we have to send them, like she said, to Baltimore for their follow-up care. A lot of them come out of the hospital, they're weak, they're not, they don't drive themselves. They can't get there. They can't get there for anything, they need refills of medications. We do not, we don't prescribe any type of opioids at all. None of my doctors do. So, that's never a concern. And as far as being close to the hospital, if something is going on, we also go to Union Hospital. If we're too far from the hospital, there's no way that, you know, we can keep that relationship where they're taken care of at the hospital if we need them to be.
Where's your current location at?
We're right there at 215 North Street.
215 North.
Yeah.
So, you're in town center zone now?
Yes.
And you're wanting to go to, enlarge into a larger town center?
Absolutely.
And I, believe me, I, we knew that we were going to have these when we were doing this, and it wasn't a perfect scenario, but we spent a lot of time. We reviewed this, we accomplished what we wanted to accomplish, and we knew that we were, I felt there was going to be a few little hiccups along the way. I don't really know what direction we can go or can't go.
Mr. Mayor, for a minute, if we could maybe take, what we were talking about earlier, the legislation from Palm Beach, there's actually no methadone or suboxone in Palm Beach, Florida. They've written the language, or we have physicians down there practicing. Now, you had said something, Mr. Jones, about being able to monitor this or police it. PDMP, the state of Maryland requires every prescription that a doctor writes that is suboxone or methadone has to go through PDMP, which is reported within 48 hours. So, I know I totally agree with you, with your perception. You bring a doctor in, and then all of a sudden they change their scope of practice, and they start doing that. We could write that legislation like Palm Beach, so that we could see it, that if they start writing it within 48 hours, it's going to flat, that they are now prescribing, and that can be something in your wording, that at that point, they would be able to be immediately evicted, now whether there would be a fine attached to the owners for renting these properties, which may, and I apologize because these gentlemen are the owners, but whatever would the incentive be, that they would continue the legitimate practice, but at the same time we would not allow this opioid or methadone prescribing, it could be done, it can be done, because it has been done.
But I think the issue is, you've got to permit the movement of doctors within the medical practice area, which is what we are in here. I mean, conceivably, if there was a large number of offices that moved out of the Medical Arts Building and nothing happened for six months, suddenly the Medical Arts Building is no longer the Medical Arts Building, it's got to be retail shops, and that would destroy its function. So, we really ask you to, this does need to be addressed, and we can provide some language, but particularly the ability of existing legitimate practices to move. We feel that needs to be addressed. Any comments on the word?
I find this really interesting issue, because we see two sides of it, accommodating the doctor, and then trying to look out for the town citizens because of the issues that we had before. And trusting our lawyer, and Mary Beth, of all, I appreciate your comment, because I know you were fully involved, engaged with this, and we kind of took the guidance from some of the information you've given us, and to be hearing all of this about the growth that you guys need, and then what's going to bring in the difference for the town in Elton, it puts us in a tough spot, because we're not medical. I don't have a medical background, but it's, it's very interesting, but this is going to be a tough one to deal with, because, like I said, I would like to see facts, accepting the ordinance from Palm Beach, is that what you said, and then looking at our legal side of it, and be fair to the public. And then looking at our legal side of it and be fair to the company and to the businesses. I'm, I'm all ears right now, that's basically what I would have to say. Would you?
Yeah, I agree. I agree. I mean, I, I know where we are and I know how long we got here. I also know and appreciate all the hard work that the attorneys and officials put into this. So I, I almost feel like, you know, you guys crafted the ordinance that we have now that's working for us. If there's a way to reevaluate it or craft it to address these types of issues or this particular issue looking into the future of, of our growth, you know, and our needs for the medical community, I'm sure you're gonna come up with a solution. I trust that if it's out there, you'll, you'll figure it out.
If I can just be, not, so, kind of clarify a little bit. I understand that the whole issue of suboxone clinics and methadone clinics are very, people have strong opinions, pro and con about them. And I, I pointed out to judges when pleading our case, that the town does not have a physician and opinion. The town, first off, is a municipality, it isn't capable of having an opinion. Those, those, the suboxone clinics and methadone clinics are permitted uses, they are leading operations in the state of Maryland. We have to make accommodations in our zoning to provide for them, and we have. And there are plenty of places, some would argue, too many places where they can exist, and they do exist. But then the question is, where do you think that they don't fit, which is, you know, in the town center? Before this issue came up with the MACS clinic, they already were not allowed in, and it was, it was the mischaracterization of the medical practice as suboxone clinic, which is exactly what they were. They, they called themselves MACS clinics. If you want on the website, it was all about suboxone clinics. And the judge just laughed at it when they tried to say it wasn't the MACS clinic. So, this really is a separate issue from a methadone and suboxone clinic, that's not what this is about. This was about.
That's correct, I agree.
Regulation of a variety of things. One of the reasons we don't want a methadone clinic versus a suboxone clinic, we're, we're familiar with their business model, and they're gonna bring in 600 people between 5:00 and 8:00 in the morning, there's no place to park, we can't accommodate them, it just overwhelms the downtown area. And there are a variety of reasons that we're taking into consideration. If you want us to take a look at this and back up some recommendations, we'd be happy to do so. Work for you, but we put a lot of time and effort into this.
I think one of the things that we, we truly do need to look at, and I know that building very well, I know your building very well, and, and I would agree with you that our intent was, we wanted to create more retail, was also part of this, and I think we're being successful with that. But I also understand the back part of your building is not really a route to, it's really not a retail avenue. I do, I really do understand that. The, the other thing that we were concerned with, I know we talked about, and, and it's kinda coming up here now, is that if that, if there's six months vacancy over in any of those buildings in the town center zone, we could be losing very valuable doctors to our community. We did recognize that, and I think, I think that there's some room to wiggle here, maybe there's a way that we can wiggle a little bit, whether it's a, I don't wanna go down the special exception route, but I think that there might be, I think that whether it's here today, I think there's gonna be more tomorrow if we don't address this a little, lock it up one way or the other. So I, I, I wanna say that we will seriously take a look at it, and I think you'll get some feedback very shortly. And any feedback you have, please feed it to us, it doesn't hurt to have it.
We will.
Okay. And I do have one quick comment about your building. The groundwater coming out of your building, do you believe it's groundwater?
The one that we're currently in?
No, your building.
At the Elton Center?
Yes.
I would think so, because we run pumps down in that, in that lower level.
Do you, do you think it's?
I, I can't, I personally think it is, but I'm happy to meet anybody that would wanna take a look at it with us.
Okay, I don't know if we've been in your building or not, but I know that your building and the, and the neighbor's building are the only two that's pumping water out like crazy. And I know you guys are pumping water out, and it's, we've checked all around and we've tested it, and it's no chlorine in that water, I wanted to make it very clear. We've tested it, so I'm just shocked that it's groundwater, because you're at a high elevation.
We put, well, when you down below, and I'm happy to share with you, maybe five minutes someday, there's three major pumps that are down below that we may be pulling too much water out of it. And I'm just thinking, how about the water level, we could lift our pump float and allow things to equalize a little bit, more than happy to take a look at it.
Yeah, take a look at it and see, but it's, I'm, I'm more concerned for you guys than, than anything else, but I'm glad you're thinking it's groundwater, because that's what our staff has said. And, but I wanted to let you know, we did look at the whole situation across the street. Back to, Rob owns a business right down the street, and I walked down there and asked you if you had any groundwater at your place, and he denied. But you're at the two highest levels, even though your, your building goes down a couple levels.
It does, and we're down below that with our pump system. I'll take a look at maybe elevating our float, our float system maybe lower than it probably wants to be.
Very good.
And I'll be happy to look and report back.
Take a look at it. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do you want us to sign you on the list and say you have that? Yeah, it'd be great. Sign in and let us know who was here.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, pleasure meeting you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Business board?
Yes, sir, I do.
Got it.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Keep it straight in here, okay? There you go, yes. of the budget. Is there anything that the commissioners would like to add to our portion of the budget? As you can see right now, everything stays the same. The mayor is getting a large increase in pay. Hopefully there's really any difference in the mayor and commissioner's side of the budget. I think you'll see that everything fell the same as in the past, there might have been an increase in dues and subscriptions. I think there was a 9% increase in liability insurance.
That would have been legit, or they worked up, not they worked up, they do work up.
We will be having an election during this fiscal budget, so there's a little money in there for the officials and the voting machines. The gala is gonna be staying the same. Conventions and expenses, I think we put just a little bit of an increase based on that. We also have, let's see, the miscellaneous expense, it's going at the, currently at the same as this past year. And you'll see in the budget that there's, there's two items in here for economic development. There is the $25,000 request, an object 103, that may be decreased a little bit down, we talked about, and we might drop that down to $15,000 on the, that, that was just kinda like, we, we never used all that money, so we may bring that down. There's gonna be, there's still a $100,000 request for the Maryland Main Street program, which that money is our economic development money, which goes to the Elton Alliance. We pay that out quarterly for $25,000 per quarter. So that request is in the budget. We still have two scholarships that we're gonna be putting in the budget for $500 each. Is there any question about the mayor and commissioners' budget? Anything you wanna add?
My chair.
A new chair?
Chairs are upstairs.
Any questions on this? All right.
I'll look into the call.
All right, perfect. Okay, the administration side, which is, we normally put Lou in, in charge of this side, so we'll run through it here real quickly. Lou, is there anything that popped out that was any more than previous years?
If there was, the only thing that probably eliminated this year is normally the stuff that Steve and them put that together about what we spend, and we're all pretty much static. I was thinking of my engineering, any engineering that I utilized in the past.
If you want to speak into the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry.
To answer that couple of questions.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Start over again.
Yeah, okay.
The, one of the things I'll probably drop out is engineering, because if any engineers works out of their budget, not my budget.
Lou turned his mic off anyhow, so it doesn't matter.
And repairs and maintenance on my vehicle, I have a 2017 vehicle, it's only got 8,700 miles on it. They, Steve put 400 in there, but I probably won't spend, except for oil changes and things like that, so that would be probably less than a hundred bucks per year, you know, change the oil that much. Contracted services, that's just for copier. Then the biggest amount of money is on the contracted services for virtual town hall, the website, internet services. I think all the IT support and everything comes out of my budget for all the other departments, and those costs right out, I'm sorry?
Except police.
Except police, yeah, police are separate. But all the administrative offices come out of my department, simply. And as I said, the engineering, I'm eliminating that altogether.
The, I'm gonna stop you there if I could, Lou. One of the things that I discussed with Steve, and would it be in this section about if we went with a, a large screen TV and a couple, a couple areas on the.
That would not be in this section.
It would not be in this section.
Different buildings, different department, individual buildings, it would be a different.
Very good.
Minor equipment.
Minor equipment.
A few dollars in there in case something comes up. MML, I don't use it, go to fall. I do attend a summer conference in Ocean City, so there's money there. That's, that's it for me.
Very good.
No capital, no capital.
No capital. Any discussion on the administration side?
No.
All right. The next one we're gonna talk about is the HR department. And I know our HR ladies are here. And Lou. One of the requests that we had mentioned, and, and I know that your budget request is a little bit different, you're gonna have to help me, help sell me on this a little bit. We had talked about, maybe we're at the point where we need a, a full-time HR person in house.
Right.
And, and sell me why we shouldn't.
Why we shouldn't?
Should or shouldn't, I don't know.
I think the needs of the town really require the greater presence of an HR generalist. So, right now, there's times when if I'm not here, something may have to be deferred, and it's always, I think, easier for people to get their answers sooner versus having to wait for, you know, the next time that I'm on site. And it will also relieve some of the peak workflows in the department that Renee's faced with at times. So it'll be, really, each physician supporting each other as a team.
Okay.
So, and I think there's a lot of times when just getting that immediate answer, although I'm available by phone, a lot of times, you know, people like to be, come in, sit, talk, and, you know, hash through or something. So I think that is really, it's needed at this point.
Okay. So in your, so in the proposed budget, we have additional HR staffing, you put a full-time generalist.
Yeah. And we hope to, we, we put out the initial ad on Indeed, we've gotten a huge response, although probably, probably over 100 and about 85 might even apply. So we're narrowing it down, and then we'll be doing our initial phone screens to make sure they truly do have the background and are, are in the price range we're looking for. And then we'll have to start with the second round of full-time interviews, which will be in-person interviews, and then we'll set up a team to.
The, the, I guess the, the comment that I had was, then, the way that you're proposing is that we would still use your services to oversee our operation. Now, my question to you is, or it really wouldn't be a question to you, but I guess the comment that I would have, why would we need you?
And it, it's not indefinitely. My goal is to train this person on everything that I do, that, that, you know, needs to go to a higher level position. And eventually, after that training, I, my hours will decrease, and maybe probably eventually fade out. But the key is to get the person up to speed and not have to have them start from ground zero, which is where I did and Renee, back when I first came in. So really, we've got, you know, we've got a sound structure now, but we need to get the person up to speed so that, you know, it doesn't regress and have to kind of rehash things if all we can take care of.
So that kind of falls on how quick the person fills that spot.
Right.
Or a couple of weeks.
Right, right, yeah.
But certainly, if you had someone that is actually qualified and you find an HR, you know, that has increased with their ability to communicate and do whatever, but there's still be a need for you to be in that position, if the town hired somebody that had tremendous criteria.
Eventually, the goal is, you don't need me on, on an ongoing basis. But it's gonna take a while to really assess and get through, in, in a year's time, there's a full range of things that only come up once a year, and so we really wanna make sure they've gone through a full cycle to, so that they get exposed to everything. But we'll know within, you know, within six months' time, which is the introductory period, we will have assessed, is this person the right person for the job to continue to grow?
And Kathleen, I wanna stress to you, you guys have been an asset to the town of Elton, so I, I wanna stress that.
Thank you.
But I also want, I wanted to make you aware, I feel it's time for us to, to kinda get on our own legs, and maybe this is the best scenario.
Yeah.
And you know, on the flip side, you could really get someone well-qualified, but that person still may need a point-in-the-person in their system and some assistance.
And that's the thing, too, there, there may be, you know, the beauty of our services is you can contract for as much or as little as you want. So if you want it to be on an on-call-as-needed basis, if something comes up and you need to get an opinion, you can reach out to us and keep us, you know, on as needed.
Mr. Lemon, you had a comment?
I think you were answering my comment. I come from a background where you have local personnel experts, but they have the, they have the availability of corporate personnel that is really full of experts, the people that deal specifically with specific areas, so forth and so on. So I think it's important, is it Kathleen? I think it's important to keep Kathleen and her group attached to, I would agree that if we add personnel here, we should drop the cost of person, drop her cost at some point, but I think it's, my experience tells me that in an area as important as personnel and as today as technical as it is, that, that you, you need to have available experts to check things and maybe double-check things, too. Just a comment.
Thank you. Rob, you have a comment?
Do we have anybody in mind to bring aboard to start?
Do we have anybody in mind to bring aboard to start pretty long, or have you given it on that far yet?
Well, we have about probably 15 resumes that are potential, that we can say, okay, they look like they have what we need. So, once we start the phone screens, then we'll know, probably within, within a month, we'll know, and hopefully, we'll have talked through, good way through the process, that maybe even have identified someone.
And who identifies through those 15, just you and?
Renee and I will be doing the initial screens to make, you know, make sure that they do have the educational credentials, see if they're certified in HR, really get a handle on what their true background is. A lot of times, HR people will present that their generalists have handled a full range of things, but really, they've been more specialists and touched on, you know, several areas, but really focused on one or two areas. And we're really wanting to find someone that has been involved, like in an HR department of one, or that has been worked in a corporate environment, or even a consulting environment, where you have had to handle the full menu of HR responsibilities. So sometimes people don't reflect that practically on paper.
Mr. Lemon, you had another comment?
Yeah, I think it's very important that, let's say, you and Louis meet this person in the interview, and I didn't hear that said, it probably happens without me saying it, but I think it's very important that whoever you hire has an ability to relate to all the employees, so that they feel comfortable going to this person and talking to them. It's just not somebody that's full of rules and regulations, that sits in an office and is divorced from the organization. Part of this personnel thing, as I view it, is the interaction between the people that work here.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Thank you.
Okay. I don't know, I touched on this at the workshop when we had that a couple months ago, and not knowing where the town will be as far as whether or not any increases will be awarded this year, but if they are, I did want to just restate that I think the way to move would be to make it instead of a straight COLA like the town has been, is to really move toward a split COLA and mayor, like most municipal governments are doing now.
I'm game for that. I think we're going to put a, there is funding this year for a COLA, and, but I've always felt that it should be based on both.
I have another question. One of the employees or a couple asked about, you, if that benefit from someone dies, the employees are given five days, or how many days are they given?
Oh, God, what do you mean?
For leave.
Oh, 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 they're given five days. And the wording in the handbook, it's either seven consecutive days in the event that a weekend calls them to quit, or five business days. And it depends on the relationship of the family member. So a parent calls them, and a spouse, and a child fall under the five days. Now, that's the bereavement leave policy, is one of the ones that, you know, we're going to be looking at to see whether or not we're doing sufficient in comparison to other organizations.
So those days have to be consecutive?
Yes, at this point. And that's, that's the thing, too. A lot of organizations moved away from that, where they're, because, you know, funerals don't always happen right away. People need to travel. So that probably is also one of the recommendations we'll be making, to make it so that it can be within, you know, sometimes during after the day of death and ending, you know, at the date of the funeral, but.
And I know recently, it came up about part-time. And we have several employees that are considered regular part-time people. NPD has one, DPW has a couple. And I think we're going to try to incorporate those people into the policy.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Where would the grand girl planning be?
Under, it's under a building.
Okay, we haven't got there yet. Okay.
We're already finding it.
Okay, one other comment I'd like to make, while I'm thinking of it. I'd asked, Michelle was taking a look at Main Street coordinators. We were very fortunate that Mary Jo was also our Main Street coordinator. It was a commitment that the Town of Elton made when we became a Main Street, but we were pushing a lot of that through the Alliance side of things. And the question, you haven't found out any information yet in regards to, some of the, we're trying to figure out if there, some municipalities have the town being not only financially responsible, but also they have the employee that is under the town arm. So have we found anything out yet?
I got about six responses so far from a poll that I sent out to the Municipal Parks Association in Maryland. And right now, I think it's six or seven, and as of yesterday, and they're half and half, that this municipality has a municipal Main Street program and their town staff, the part of town staff, the other half are not.
Okay.
So I'm still collecting the info.
Perfect. I just wanted to let the board know that I was trying to weigh those things out a little bit also. Okay, Finance Department, Beth, how much you need? I mean, Steve, how much you need? You guys control all the funding. So going through this, Object 11, there's really no change on Object 11, which is the audit group. And I wanted to let you know, I was watching the crime story called American Greed. Have you guys seen that one, American Greed? And it was two nights ago, it had the lady with all the horses.
Yeah, again.
Well, that was, that was a documentary.
Yes.
But on American Greed, they actually, they actually showed the municipality again, and how the person in, well, the, I'm going to, I don't know what her role was. She was the administrator, she was the finance director.
She wore a few different hats.
She swindled $56 million, $56 million out of the municipality over, let's say, 20 years. But the reason I brought that up is that when I turned to this very first page and I saw our Clifton Larson, Allen is the same auditor that had to pay back 44 million to the municipality. So that's the only reason I brought that back. But if anyone has a chance, take a look at the movie, All the Queen's Horses.
It's a good one.
It was very good. Very good. Not that I'm suggesting anything here, I just want to make that very clear.
He has no horses.
He has no horse, he was talking about buying some horses.
He's got two now.
All right, very good. All right, I'm just looking through this, the postage, the travels, meals, the advertisement, everything appears to be the same as last year. Is there any items that, until we get to the Capitol? I'm speeding down here to the Capitol, because I knew that that was going to be the big jump. We had a presentation a couple weeks ago by Mike Devine, and he talked about the actual equipment. Here we got the financial software on Object 99, a request for $75,000, which will be implemented partially through the water fund money and the sewer fund money, and half of it with the general fund money.
Seventy-five is just the general fund.
But these are, these are software items that we have to do, and.
What we currently use is rapidly approaching under this life and support, so we need to move away from that.
I don't think anyone has any problem with that, we've got to be current with our software. Very good. Any other comments? Finance? Very good. Next item is municipal buildings. This one's got some additions to it. All right. The insurance property might go up about 1%, so we put a 1% increase on the insurance property. Electricity, we just base it upon the same numbers that we've been receiving in the past. Actually, I got you guys all one of these, or did you have?
We're talking good.
Good, all right. Actually, it's in the back, it's in the, I think, very end of that. So then you get to Object 24, which is heating oil, same as last year, natural gas, we put about the same number. We got into repairs, and you're going to see the repair number is a little bit higher than it's been in the past, and part of it's been for, is this where, is this the fund we're going to take the money out for?
That would be 99, couple more pages, Object 99. Delete the windows for 70.
No, was this, Louis was saying he needed a hot, or dishwasher and a hot water tank to make that sell.
That would be current year.
Current year, okay. We got contracted services, which are based on contracts that we currently have. So we're going to get down to item number, there's 36, 37, all the same. The very last item, you'll see a capital outlay, line details, and what we put in here was, here's the items that are probably the most important, the acquisition of the Elton Armory. Currently, we put $275,000 in for that. That's what the request in, I feel, I still feel extremely comfortable to say that we will receive a state grant to pay for that building. So we're going to balance that 275 with a projected grant amount of 275,000. So that'll be a wash. Our neighborhood community center, you'll see in here that we're projecting $3.1 million. We currently have $500,000, which was saved for that building, and we've got $800,000, which we are receiving from a grant, which gave us a total of 1.3 million. So we were still about $1.8 million short, and we're going to borrow that from ourselves from our sewer fund. So when we borrow that from the sewer fund, we won't have to get any outside financing. And it's going to be up to this board to decide how much interest we pay back to ourselves when we pay back our sewer fund. So that'll come up here very shortly. Also, in this request, I put a number of $5,000 in here, and what I'd like to do is we have, everyone's going with smart technology, smart TVs, and it's very simple to use with Bluetooth today and remotes. I think that we can, I'm not going to say necessarily replace our projector up here, but I believe that we can put a smart TV up there that can be controlled from the laptop right over. And we also might be able to put maybe another TV off to the side in some manner, so that the public can actually watch the visual, instead of trying to wash the visual off onto the side.
I agree.
So I think we can make those things better, and I think we can get all that done for under $50,000, so I, I put that into the budget. I'm not exactly sure, the phones were for.
They're the actual handsets.
Right, because the wiring was not, the first price we got a couple years ago, we thought the wiring would not support the new fire optic voiceover IP for our phones, but when Mike Devine looked at what we had over top, he was, it wasn't much better than it was.
Perfect.
So what's happening there, DOIP?
Voiceover internet protocol, I think that's what that stands for. Phone line is not over copper line, but over the internet, over fire optic lines.
So it was an additional $8,200 to get our capital. Also, you'll see the last item in there that I'd like to do this, for fiscal 2020. We started a project at Elk Landing, I believe it was in 1998 or 1999. It was the first year I became mayor. Back then, we acquired, I don't know how many acres of land, we renovated the Hollingsworth House. We always wanted to get the John Steelman House, which is the brick house to the right. Over the last 16 years, the Elk Landing group has worked hard at stabilizing the Steelman House. They've been able to put a new roof on the building, they've been able to clean out the inside. It's a stabilized building at this point. Very fortunate that with the help of Gene Bitter, they were able to get a grant for $100,000 to finish the windows on the Steelman House. But I think the bidder came back, and I was told that they were a little bit short on, the work was more than what the grant was for. And I think that we can get some additional work and get that building done this year. So I'd like to ask the board if we could give the Elk Landing Foundation a grant for $50,000 to finish up the Steelman House. Or, when I say finish it up, it'll be darn close. So if we can get everything done, it'll be a usable space for activities, events, for the public to really enjoy. So I think we're that close. So that's something I'm going to put into the budget for your guys' approval when we move forward to vote on it. The other comment that I'd like to make, since we finished up with that, you'll see, well, I, we'll move on. Any questions about municipal buildings, any in this? The, yeah, Mr. Lemon?
You have in there the purchase of the armory, which I think is a great thing, but aren't you going to have to spend a lot of money to upgrade it, electrical and so forth and so on?
There is, I think that we're doing our due diligence currently, and I know Chip had his accident, he must have knew you were going to ask that question. But I know that it will need a heating and air conditioning system, there's work that does need to be done in there, and the state, any dollar that the Town of Elton spends in that building, it'll be deducted off of the price of acquisition. But saying that, I continue to say, I think that we're going to get that building, my, my belief is, that we're going to get that building for the traditional $1 transfer and over. That's my hope, and I've had members of our delegation that has said that to me. It's not a pie in the sky for me, it's, they're going to really work with us to make that happen. But your point is, we didn't put any money in the budget for any expenses at this point to get the thing up and running. And quite frankly, we really don't have that number yet. We're having a tough, it's not that we're having a tough time getting in the building, we do have access to the building. We got right of entry. In fact, I think we'd all like to go over and take another look at it, if we could get back in there. But I, we will have to amend the budget, as we need money to put into there. But it's going to go along with what I was just stating, I'd like for the board to consider at some point for next fiscal year, that we're going to have the armory, we're going to have Elk Landing, which the town owns Elk Landing, but we have leased it out to the Elk Landing Foundation. But I think we need to look at maybe finding a person that can work with both of these organizations, our own self and the Elk Landing, and try to bring activities and action to those buildings, which will help financially bring the costs down. Gene had brought this to everyone's attention here, on your desk. You have, from the city of Bel Air, it's how they use their, their armory, their usage. So this is a, this was given to the Board of Town Commissioners of Bel Air on March 3rd, 2018. And what it does is, it tells you how many events they hosted, how much each event costs them, how much, this is, this is, this is pretty much what it's going to cost us at this armory. So it's a very good, a lot of information here to marry off of. But you're going to see it's still very difficult to raise enough money to pay for itself. I think you're going to see that. It's going to be one of those ones that's going to. It's going to be one of those ones, it's going to cost us money each year to keep the armory, but I think it was the right thing to do for our community and make sure that we keep that thing going. So take a look at that. Is there any questions in regards to any of the budget information that was presented today? You will have your full budget information by the end of April, I'd like to, quite frankly, if you could have it, I don't know if you could have it next Wednesday?
Yeah.
That'd be pretty impressive.
Could you have it, well, then you can have it on the 24th, 26th, April 26th, we need it on April 26th. That's the last Friday of the month. Think you can do it?
It'll be general fund.
Perfect.
Right, right.
I'd like to have that available for the board, and the board's going to have to vote on the budget by.
Well, we, probably, as of past year, we introduced a second meeting in May, you have to introduce it, these, what, thirty days prior to the beginning of the fiscal year, then you have to vote to adopt it. June, I think it's June 5th this year, the first Wednesday in June.
So the good news is, if we can get to the board on the 26th of April, that'll be eighteen days before introduction.
More time than there is in the bodies for the past.
Guys all happy, that'd be a good, yeah.
Yeah.
I think the more time, the better. All right, this is, this, Mr. Ginder?
When, when do you anticipate groundbreaking for the community center and finish completion?
We don't have that yet, because we have to coordinate with the HCD and everything. The contractor expects early June to actually start construction, but we have to wait and see.
So if you, if you could hear Lou back there, the contractor's expecting to start early June, so we could have a ceremonial groundbreaking, quite frankly, anytime prior to that, and I think that would be good, Lou, maybe coordinate with the board.
With the D H C D, because they're putting eight-hundred grand in.
Oh, so we have to coordinate with the folks that are giving us the eight-hundred thousand to see when they're available, also.
My question was, if it was going to be completed before the actual fiscal year budget is over, if you anticipate adding any additional costs for staffing that community center, so.
Actually, well, I'll share with you, the, I think all of our goal of this board would be spring of 2020, that that facility could be open with a ribbon cutting. I think our initial, with the contractor was after that, but I believe that he has amended that, that he believes he can be done, is that correct, Lou, or did he give an ending?
Well, Larry said, Larry said the same, that he did say it would be about the springtime, but Louis had a different date, but whatever it is.
On the initial plan, it showed it would be after this fiscal, but he believes he's going to finish before the fiscal, and I actually spoke with the Parks and Rec Director today, and she's going to send me a one-page amendment to us with her budget requesting an additional person, and there was, there was another note that she was, and it was preparing for the, the rec center.
Okay, thank you.
She said you were applying. I'm just.
Got a question.
Hey, dude. Is there any other, Jean, you have anything?
No.
Charles?
No, no.
Well, I'd like to say a couple of comments before I get to the post that I left. We had the roast last week, and I have to tell you, Rob, you as an emcee was phenomenal, and I have to tell you that we have DVD copies that have been made, that are available to the board, and I'm considering posting on my personal page, depending on how it turned out, but there is some language that is above the PG, which may be, oh, listen, it is what it is, I want to say, but I have to say, I was skeptical of how well that roast was going to turn out, but I have to say, I thought we did a darn good job.
It was very good.
I knew it was going to be good.
The emcee was well rehearsed, and, and not only that, I think the people who presented were well rehearsed as well.
I was, I was shocked how well it was.
I was surprised.
I was shocked how well it went, and I'm glad that everyone here participates in, and thank you for being there. Earl, you have anything you want to say?
Yeah.
Well, listen, I want to thank you for.
Come on board, Rob.
Thank you, thank you.
I'm so sorry, I wouldn't.
I wanted to be the first to congratulate you on the board. Everybody, just one, two, three, welcome you to the board, and I think you're going to do well, and see, that's all I got to say now.
Rob, you're on, if you've got anything to say.
I do not at this moment, now, I'll have more to say as time goes by, I'm leaving.
I know you will.
You're the first.
And I wouldn't be second or third on the board, welcome you aboard, I'm so sorry that went right. I was in for your work.
Yes, you did. And this is the time of the meeting we open up the floor for public comment. Any comments, Mr. Lemon?
Just a question, any update on the Delaware Avenue Pedestrian Bridge?
Lou, can you give me an update on Delaware Avenue?
Actually, I just, Benjamin Storm, we just notified that another person, I think this is the third or fourth person that says, going to sign as a project manager on it, but it's still in the planning phase.
It's in the planning phase?
Oh, yeah.
We, since, since we started this process, I think we're on our thirty-second engineer, but the fourth, just the fourth engineer in the last year.
You won't get your wish of having it up last year.
No, we won't, we won't, no way. Anyone else have anything to say? This meeting is adjourned.